Hey Weston. Did you get my email?
He's muted. Who's the hat?
Ed just called me. He said, "Virtual tonight." I said, "Yeah." He's like, "Oh, that was one of the..." One of many emails that must have came through that I missed. Yeah.
He responded that he was attending.
He's on his way home, so he'll be a little bit late.
Okay.
Besides Ed, do we have quorum?
Well, Brad's not here yet.
Brad said he'd be on.
And Jim said he was gonna be here, so. So we should be okay. And Tammy? And Jen did respond, but she's not here yet.
We're a little early. Somebody wants to know is there a password?
It's, the link should take them straight here. Who asked that?
Tammy.
Okay, it's, it's a, on all-inclusive link.
I just clicked on the link from my calendar.
Yeah, and that got you here, right? My timing is, I've gotta figure this out to make it go live. So we're not sending, sitting here on Facebook, just five of us.
Yeah, make sure you let me know when. I'm gonna mute as soon as you do.
So I, I don't see Lisa, Connor, or Weston.
Their video's off.
Okay, got it.
Did you, were you able to speak with Steve today? Is he gonna make it?
Yeah, I hope he is. I got the information to him.
Okay.
I dropped it off, thank you very much.
Okay, and I, I made an error in those variance orders, and I need you to come back and sign them.
Okay.
If that's okay, thank you.
That's not a problem.
Thank you.
Jim Vivian is asking for you to send the invite. I've got it up.
Okay.
Very well, in a second. Jim will be there. As of 15 minutes ago.
Saw that email? There's Brad. And Tammy. There you go. You're muted, Brad.
Got it. Thank you, I got your link, appreciate that.
Sure. I just lost the livestream on Facebook, give me a second. Alright, I got Steve and Jim Vivian.
And Tammy.
And Tammy, I saw ya.
And Taylor.
Alright, hi Steve.
Steve, you're on mute. And Jim is sharing a screen.
I think you can just take that over again, Lisa.
I'm not feeling badly anymore.
Hey Jim, if you can hear us, you have to go to the top or bottom and click Stop Share.
I think I can do it, but I think it's gonna, I think it may turn off everybody's sharing options.
Okay, it's not letting me.
Alright.
Yep, indeed.
Okay.
Okay, and then if everyone will mute their microphone while they're not talking.
And I'm gonna hit the Live button on Facebook. Okay?
Who are we missing?
Ed on the phone, he thought the meeting was in person, so he is on his way back. He's trying to log in now. I'm hearing a lot of background noise. Can everyone mute their microphones?
Lisa, we ready to start?
Let's start.
Okay. I'd like to bring the order of tonight's planning board meeting at 7:02 on July 27th. I think we have a quorum with Steve, Tammy, Walt, Jim, Jen, and I believe Ed is on the phone, is that correct? So we have a full board here. And let me find. I got here. So we have a quorum. Does anybody have a chance to review the minutes for our last meeting? Anyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Any changes, deletes, and alterations to the minutes? I'm gonna assume no, and we'll need to have a voice vote to approve the minutes. Steve, do you approve the minutes, yea or nay?
Steve, you're muted.
Okay, we got Ed loading up. Walt, do you approve the minutes, yea or nay? Okay, we have Walt's approval. Ed, do you approve the minutes for the last meeting? Thumbs up, thumbs down? Alright, Ed approves.
There you go. Now you should be able to hear me.
I got you now, thank you.
Alright.
Steve, do you approve the minutes, yea or nay? Thumbs up, thumbs down? You're muted, Steve. Thumbs up, thumbs down? Alright. Jim, thumbs up, thumbs down on the minutes?
Yes.
Alright, Steve has a thumbs up. Jim has a thumbs up. Jen?
Yes.
Yes.
Jen approves for the minutes.
Yes.
Tammy, do you approve the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so we have all in favor of approving the minutes, have unanimous consent. Alright, so that's gonna bring us to our next order of business. Lisa, will you help us with that, please?
Yep, one second.
So Lisa's taking over the screens, in case y'all hadn't figured that out yet.
Alright, the planning board shall review and consider an entry monument application and plans. This is for the Weddington Acres subdivision. Section 58-9 of the Code of Ordinance states that entry perimeter walls and monuments are not required to be any specific height or style, but are subject to review and approval of the planning board. The roads in the subdivision were approved as private back in January 2018. I listed some conditions in your staff report. The proposed location allows up to about two cars stacking, and the current layout does include a turnaround area. The columns have a stone veneer and are approximately eight feet, six inches in height, and then the sign on that column is about 15 square feet, which is less than our maximum of 20 square feet. Staff recommends approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have Weston Bowles on the phone and Connor Horn with WK Dixon to answer any questions.
Okay.
Next slide is a conceptual sketch of what it looks like, and then you have your site layout and your, your details of the column and the sign.
Okay, Lisa, can you go to screen nine and 10, please? So nine is which road, Antioch Church, or is that?
This is Weddington Matthews Road, slide 10, Antioch Church Road.
Okay, so you can go back to screen nine, please. From a review standpoint, if someone from WK Dixon can respond a little bit about this, in looking at this particular piece, I think we had a different drawing submitted once before. Is this the latest and greatest drawing that we have?
Yes, this is the latest and greatest. Lisa had for the previous plans that y'all were looking at. Just confirm, y'all can hear me, right?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Lisa did for me over the previous plans that y'all were looking at, and those were before the roads were turned to private roadways, so they showed curb and gutter and sidewalk on them, and then those are also before the deceleration lane on Weddington Matthews Road and the right turn lane on Antioch Church Road were added.
Okay, so the drawing indicates a distance of about, I can't enlarge the screen, so bear with me here, about 24 feet between center to column to center column on the entry gate, is that correct?
Hold on one second. Pull that Meyer stuff up, if I can. At the entrance gate?
Yes, this is, this is a main gate between, on the entrance gate on Weddington Matthews Road.
What into, so we got 18 foot between gates?
Inside, inside the columns?
Oh, okay, it's 26 feet.
26 feet, and then inside the traffic lane is what, 18 feet?
I believe that is correct, but I don't have that dimension in front of me.
Okay. So my concern is that normal traffic lanes are about nine feet wide, maybe a little bit more.
10 to 12.
10 to 12, okay, well that reinforces what I'm getting ready to say. My concern is that those, those lanes are too narrow to accommodate someone to go past when someone is at the call box that cannot get entry.
Okay.
Visitor comes in, they gotta stack up right there, and they're not gonna be stacking them at the gate, they're gonna be stacking them at the call box. And so how does someone get by? Because now we're stacking people up on a major road, major thoroughfare.
That's a good point.
Weston, do you have the ability to make this outgoing lane skinnier to widen the, near the entry box, where the call box, a little bit wider? Do you have room to move around that, that median in the middle?
Yeah, I think that that could be accommodated. I think there's some ways to show where cars can get around, and we can create a new drawing to show how cars can get around, have two cars wide in this scenario.
Okay, so, so what my concern is, is that it's awful narrow, and we got a major road back there, so we certainly don't want cars backing up the Weddington Matthews Road.
Understood.
And then my initial thought is, I went and looked at Skycroft, Scott Brook, whatever that is, off Toomah Creek, Shadow Lane, and also the other one right there on Ray Road. The narrowest lane from back of cur, excuse me, pavement to pavement is 18 feet.
Okay.
And so we'd really like to see something closer to 20 feet in, in that area to allow for normal passage. So if a contractor comes in, which they will with a trailer, landscapers do it all the time, that trailer is probably gonna be close to nine feet wide on the outside edges of the trailer. So to accommodate a car, my pickup truck going beside that to allow mirror clearance and then actually get around, 20 feet is probably gonna be much more ideal, and that may be a bit accommodated by actually reducing the size of the median itself, as opposed to, I, I can't see how wide that is, but let's call it 10 feet wide, maybe call it 6 feet wide, or whatever the number is, and maybe even, because that's an exit lane, that doesn't necessarily need to be 16 or feet wide, that can maybe be 14 feet wide, or something like that. So I, I would probably would like to see something along those lines. Is there any other response from WK, or Weston, or any of the other board?
This is Ed Gusheskin, I share your concerns about stacking with, with only two vehicles, if you have a contractor pulling up to the gate and can't get in the gate, and how do, how do, how do you get around that, so? Yeah, I, I agree with you, there, there needs to be a way that if someone's stacked up at that call box and can't get in, either that call box and that whole gate structure needs to be moved further into the development to allow stacking, because to me, it's not stacking behind the gate, it's stacking behind the call box.
That's correct.
That is the biggest issue. There, you can't get entry, you've got traffic backing up. So I've, I've looked at the developer to give us some suggestions as to how to fix that.
Is it, is it Weston?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Weston. What flexibility do you have to actually push that entry point further into the development? Is there much flexibility without?
I mean, at this point, a lot of that, as y'all probably see, is being constructed out there. There's probably, with all the utilities and everything, that's probably gone in already. I just worry that there's a lot of ramifications to trying to do something right now.
Can you squeeze?
You should get this approval before you start construction. Sorry. That's the purpose of this approval process.
And I, I understand, and I think we thought we had all approvals, and we didn't realize that the planning board had to approve it again.
Quick question, and also, this is Walt. I was concerned about somebody at the call box not being able to get out of the way with a fire truck coming through, and I did not know the dimensions of the fire truck.
Well, I think that's what we addressed with the, with additional width, that's what we're trying to accommodate now, you're in the right path, Walt.
Okay, well, that, that was, I didn't know if a fire truck was wider than the 10 or 11 feet width, they seem to be wider to me.
Right.
Weston, you said you can't really move where the gates are, but can we move this median and shrink it a little bit? Or like what Brad was saying at the beginning, kind of either move it over or shrink it so that exit lane is less wide?
And I think we can get the 20-foot wide on the entrance lane, I don't, I mean, there's, there should be flexibility to get that. My worry is pushing the gates into the site more.
Well, this is Ed again, if you can get it to 20 feet, that, that should be enough room for a vehicle to get around someone that's stuck at that, at that call box.
Correct.
That should do it.
So is it wide enough for a fire truck to get around? That's still my question, it would be?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll defer to the engineer, but my understanding is, you have standard lane, standard driveway is only 10 feet, a wider driveway is 12 feet. I think our standard lanes in the county are only 12-foot wide lanes, and some of our country roads are even a lot, so. Fortunately, our fire truck drivers are pretty skilled, and if you give them, you give them 10, 12 feet, they'll get through.
Good, thank you.
I was just gonna point out, the edge of pavement is actually this line back here, so there is this kind of dead space between the actual right of way, which is here, and the edge of pavement, existing edge of pavement right here, so we do have some room back here, and then like they said, we got a right-hand turn lane room here. But hopefully, if a fire truck, by making it 20 feet wide and having this turnaround, hopefully the person here can quickly get into this turnaround area if it's an emergency situation.
Fire and rescue medical will be able to access the gate to the Yelp device, they're not gonna be limited to the telephone entry system that's out front. So that's part of the safety piece, so the width of the road is the, is really the main issue for me, and also where the median is, is because the stacking's gonna be from the intercom system. So we really only got two cars stacked up from right there, because of where that is. So I would really like to see that entry monument, or the gate system being pushed at least another 10 feet back in toward the property to accommodate that, especially on Weddington Matthews Road, that's not some country road, that's a significant road, that will only get busier. Alright, can we, does anybody have any comments between this particular gate location? Can we move to slide 10, which is on the Antioch Church roadside?
Antioch, okay.
So here we have a similar circumstance, but obviously the road is not nearly as busy as Weddington Matthews Road is. It says significant traffic, but we've got somewhere the same circumstance. What does the property allow for that entry monument to be putting back in, or the gate entry lane, to be putting back further into the property for another, say, 10 feet or so?
I dare again, I'd have to look at it, because I, I don't have all the information in front of me, from where the water line's at to, yeah, that would take some time to figure out.
Okay, and the other alternative is where the, where the gates are located in the median, they're toward the front of that component. And if the columns are pushed back toward the rear of that, where the line is drawn, where Lisa's mark is now, then that's gonna pick up another increment, and then everything can kind of be shifted back this way a little bit.
Let me ask, what, are you trying to shift the call box 10 foot?
I'm trying to get the callbacks further into the property, yes, because right now you only have really room. You have two cars stacked up there, you don't have a third car stacked up.
Okay.
So that's what I'm trying to find a way to help you do that without overburdening and being outlandish and, you know, need here, but the fact is, I'm gonna have a hard time approving, or recommending for approval, that's the board's decision for a two-car stack up, which is kind of what we got. Yes, where the gate is, is fine, but that's not where the reality, where people gonna stack up, they're gonna stack up where the call box is.
Okay.
So that's where my concern is, I think we got a significant safety issue right there.
Lisa, can you remind me what approval, do you know what approvals we have already? Because I thought we had brought this earlier, and this is me. It's been, and probably all y'all realize, this project's going on for way too long at this point. But did we bring this to planning board already once? And there's a planning board, the final approval? Or do we have to go to, to the?
Construction, right, the, the planning board has final approvals for gates and monuments. The construction plans through along with the preliminary plat, but I don't know if they've seen this, this detail. And then when you guys did the private road approval, that's when they, they saw it through that private road approval, but back then, we had that other exhibit with the turnaround truck and the wider lanes, and that's when it was curb and gutter.
Okay. Okay. So what I'm hearing is we need 10 more feet on, to, to make this approvable.
I'm seeing at least that, yeah. Because right now, your stack-up methodology is really only two cars.
Particularly on, on the Weddington Matthews Road entrance. I mean, the way that, that turn lane, that, that right-hand turn lane almost becomes immaterial because of the, the location of the call box. That, now you're gonna be having to swing out pretty far in order to make that, that turn, not on this one, but on Weddington Matthews. If you look at that, I mean, most of this turn lane is not gonna be used because of where the call box is located. So that, I think on, on this road, on this entrance in particular, the call box really needs to move in a good 10 feet, or if you can accommodate it, to make sure you're not stacking vehicles up onto a major thoroughfare.
Okay.
Yeah. So do we want to table this discussion and do a review for a different drawing?
That's a good idea. That's a good idea.
Lisa Weston, do you have a comment along those lines?
You have the ability to conditionally approve it with the?
I would rather see the drawings again, in all honesty.
I would too.
There, there's a lot of safety issue here. And I think the board probably needs to see a revised drawing before that.
Yep.
This is, this is a bad piece of property with the two roads, just like they are right now. We've always been concerned about these two particular issues.
Okay.
Yeah. So Lisa, do we need a motion? Do we need to just?
Yeah, if you don't.
Want to table it, or what do we want to do here?
Go ahead and do a motion.
Okay. Need a motion to table this discussion for the gates and entry monuments for Weddington Acres.
So you, I second it.
Who was second?
Jim.
Jim, thank you, Jim. Jim's second. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, have unanimous consent there? Okay. Trying to find my memo here. I hadn't printed out at all the things. Lisa, I'll call you tomorrow and we can discuss this a little bit further about what may or can't work out. Is that all right?
Sounds good.
What's next on the agenda of the review?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I'm going to turn it over to you, please.
Let me throw it up on the screen.
Thank you, everyone on the planning board. I'm going to drop off now.
Great, thank you Weston.
You're welcome.
So every July, the town planning board and council is to do an annual review to look at all the projects that have been approved over the last year, and then how it relates to the land use plan. So the result is maybe a recommendation for any new policies that we need, any changes to the land use plan or any better implementation. So I'll quickly go through these, and then after each one, if you guys have a comment on how we could do better, or any comments on land use or implementation, I'll stop. So we reviewed final plot for Harlow's Crossing Phase Two at the last meeting. I made some comments about making sure it's in compliance with the preliminary plot, bonds, maintenance agreements overall for the protection of open space and conservation lands. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, or anything you want to bring up about our final plot review process?
The only thing with Harlow's Crossing is we looked at kind of rearranging how we were doing things, and so I think that's a, a good conversation we had. So we've got the new review policy. I'm going to use that terminology now before we get, the developer gets too far to get back in more in line with what the gentleman's name was, Mettles. His name escaped me. So I think that was a good conversation, what we had on that.
Gotcha. So maybe take a, make a note there that we, that was one of the first approvals that we kind of rearranged some stuff and that since then we have Randall Aron's four-step process.
Yes.
Okay, next is the, so we don't have as many projects this year as we did last year, but we have a lot of bigger projects. So we have the erosion control ordinance, which took us a good year and a half. We've, we're able to find failures and deficiencies through our town's construction inspector with no oversight or action from Deaner. We developed an ordinance and stormwater review board to kind of implement this ordinance. Any comments or anything to add to that item?
My only comment is that I think we've got it finally covered.
Yes, it's been working well.
I think so.
Next is our conservation subdivision update. I think we did this July, August of last year. We have this four-step process. We have a lot of big projects coming in. I'm excited to get this charrette and design process going. Any questions about that text amendment?
Lisa, do we know when we're going to be implementing this for the first time?
I have received the yield plan and a site resource and analysis map for the woods. I'm waiting for their revisions to their yield plan. They'll probably lose some lots with some of the streams going through there. So as soon as I see those revisions and that we have a valid yield plan, I think we're within a month of scheduling that, that charrette, that walk, and then the charrette after to go through that four-step process. I did reach out to Randall, since it's such a big project and it's our first one. He is willing to do a Zoom meeting during the charrette. And there's actually some conservation agencies that want to sit in and listen to that process as well that have been following Randall and kind of following what we're doing as well. So it's exciting stuff, hopefully within a month.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
We've got the entry monuments gate for Walden at Providence. You guys reviewed to make sure they're being safe by the stacking. Maybe one recommendation that can come out of this is actually writing in the ordinance and requiring the three-car stack versus just on-the-fly kind of reviews. We don't have any standards to really a bye-bye.
I thought we did have a standard on that. Maybe we just, that's what we normally did. Is that not the case?
Yeah, that's just what we've been, we've been doing. We've been requiring the three-car stack, but it's not in the ordinance.
Okay. And the other component we may want to add in the ordinance is to comply with North Carolina Fire Marshal with the gate width for the entry gates. I think those gates that they actually have there at Walden are awful narrow and are odd when compared to the other gates that we have for the other gated communities in town. So normally the 20-foot minimum for the entry gate alone is the normal standard from, from the North Carolina Fire Marshal. We can talk about that a little bit later as well.
Yep, I'll add that to the list. The next thing we did or have listed is the sketch plan preliminary plot review for Hemby Place. This is the one where we really looked at that entrance. They had the single entrance off of Hemby Road. We were worried about cars backing up and be able to take a left out, especially in the morning. We were able to get them to do that second access onto Providence, which is a right-in, right-out only, actually right-out only. We also kind of realized that there's some several large trees on this property, and there is no control. It didn't go through that four-step design process, and by the time we reviewed it, there was, there was no control or way to, to make them change it and save those trees. Just an update, we have one contract with the Union County Urban Forester as of July 1. So we do have him to help us write an ordinance, especially for the R40. He, he believes the conservation subdivision and the grouping of trees that we can save and the planning ahead will come into handy, but we really need something for our conventional by rights subdivisions. Thoughts?
I have a question.
Right track for that.
This is Jen. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I have a question about that, about that specific development, obviously, because it's, it's right by me. The, when they turn into that off of Hemby, do you know the distance of that, of that entry lane? And how far does it go? Because obviously there's two lanes that turn off of Providence now, and I just had an issue with it today. There's a disabled car that's over on the side, and it's been sitting there for quite some time. And somebody, basically, they almost rear-ended it because they were trying to, to merge, and somebody wouldn't let them merge. So just curious, has anybody thought about, I, I don't, what's the distance or how, how far does that go over, if you know what I mean?
Yeah, we made them line up with the subdivision access across the street because that's the safest spot. And that was the, that's the very reason that we made them do a right-hand turn lane because you're going to have cars accelerating, looking over their left shoulder, trying to get into the single lane of traffic while you will have other cars decelling to turn right into Hemby Place. So that, that was the reason we got them to do a right-hand decel lane going into the property. I don't know the distance though.
They have any, I don't know if there's that particular outside right lane to turn left if they, I don't know if they put a sign arrow there that says, you know, it, it just seems like more people are going in that lane, and then they're gunning it to try to merge. I don't, I don't, I'm just seeing it more often.
Yeah, I can talk to DOT.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Any other comments, and I'll move on?
Nope.
We did a design review board review for the Wesley Chapel Volunteer Fire Department construction documents. We had the issue that we worked out, obviously, with the landscape buffer, but I think the elevations and signs and everything looks good and is within character of the town. Any comments? And then the last thing we did was the land use plan update. We went through section by section, took us months, which I think was a very good exercise for us all. Make sure it continues to match with our values and goals of the town.
This is a point of consideration. The, the previous board went into great detail and great lengths over a long period of time to go through that land use plan update. So I would encourage Jen and Ed, because you guys weren't a part of going through that, to take some time and go through there and be familiar with what that is, so we can kind of stay on that same plane if possible. So we, we have a lot of large opportunities for that to be changed, and things happen. So a, a lot of work went into that land use plan, so I'd like to be able to try to stay within the context of that, at least the guidelines of that for sure.
It is exciting reading, Brad.
Yeah, you need to go to sleep. That's, that's your book right there.
Last few items are just kind of copy and paste from what we've had in the past. So this will go to the council at their August meeting to review. I'll write in the recommendations that we talked about tonight. Is there anything else we should add to this?
I have no additions or deletions.
Have, have we eliminated the idea of having a tree ordinance? And I apologize if you mentioned that specifically.
Pretty much for conservation subdivisions with us having the ability up front to kind of control where we want the open space and where to design around, we should be able to see those trees up front with their tree preservation plan and save a grouping of them. I think his concern was one falling down on a single lot, the owner takes it away versus, you know, the, the tree falling in the woods that regenerates and continues to, to grow and flourish. So for conservation subdivision, he says what we're doing now is best, the way we're doing it. It's just, we, we have nothing for our conventional by rights subdivisions.
Yeah, I think the charrette pretty much addresses, that's our opportunity to address that, I think.
Thanks, Brad. That, that's what I was, was trying, I guess, trying to ask.
Yeah, I thought that's where you're headed. So I think the charrette process is going to enable us to have a lot more influence on where things are placed. Let's put it that way.
I think the charrettes will help a lot. Danny, if you remember, that's what we were trying to do when we were doing the walkthrough, remember?
Yes.
We were trying to get him to understand what we were saying at the time without any hammer. So I think we've got it covered now.
Okay.
Any other additions, deletions to the land use annual review? All right, let's move on to item C, update from Unified Development Ordinance. Lisa?
All right. So we, we discussed this a little bit at the retreat. Those of you who don't know what a UDO is, it's a Unified Development Ordinance. It's a kind of a policy instrument that combines our subdivision ordinance and our traditional zoning ordinance into, and what other, whatever other regulations we want into a single document that's intended to kind of streamline and coordinate the development process. So right now, I have a developer come in and ask me what the process is. Obviously, I'll send them to the subdivision ordinance, but then say, well, the, the lot size requirements are in the zoning ordinance. And oh, by the way, you have to bring your entry great gate and monument sign. You got to look at the sign ordinance back through the planning board. And don't forget about our lighting ordinance and our stormwater ordinances. So by doing a unified development ordinance, we'll have one streamlined document that we can pretty much hand to a developer or any citizen that's kind of easy to read and walks you through the process. We hope to also remove any inconsistencies and outdated policies. And then we, we talked about this before, the new legislative requirements of 160D. It's taken the county requirements of 153A and the town requirements of 168 and combining it into what's called 160D. So there's new terminology that we have to use. And there's some different processes that we have to have in our ordinances. With COVID, this has been, the, the date to have it done by has been moved back. It was December of this year. It's moved back to, I think, July or August of 2021. We do have some more time, but also with COVID, we were able to kind of get started using our attorney retainer time. They've, they've started. So we had a work session with the town council last Tuesday, and there's another one tomorrow morning at 9:30. We're trying to get them to, since they're the legislative body, the approval authority, trying to get them to approve the scope of work. And then you guys will be, we'll do it kind of like the land use plan, where you guys are working through section by section for the next six to, six to eight months, reviewing all the details. We'll throw it to council, put it on their consent agenda so they can keep up with it. But we'll, we'll keep it similar to the, what we did with the land use plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Lisa, if I can remind, if folks wanted to see what a UDO looks like for real, you can go to Seven Devils in North Carolina. They've had that for several years now, and you can read through it very quickly. Skim it just to see what one of them really looks like.
Thank you, Walt. Anyone else? All right, moving right along here. Update from town planning report from July town council meeting.
At the council meeting, the town council approved the Harlow's Crossing Phase Two final plot. They approved the design review board elevation signs and landscaping plan for the fire department up on Ray and Reed Dairy Road. And they also discussed the intersection design workbook through, we did that through the Union County Critical Intersection Analysis. We specifically looked at Potter and Forest Lawn. And that's it.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. Board member comments? Anyone?
No comment.
All right, with no comments, I need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Lisa, care everybody.
Bye.
Everybody have a good day.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.